All right, once again, welcome everybody here today. It's six o'clock, we're having a, the City of Riverbanks Planning Commission meeting will commence. A call to order.
Chair McKenney.
Here.
Vice Chair King.
Here.
Commissioner Stewart. Commissioner Tobacco.
Here.
And Commissioner McRitchie.
Here.
Conflict of interest. Any planning commission member or staff who has direct conflict of interest on any scheduled agenda item to be considered to, to be considered is to declare their conflict at this time. Seeing none, move forward. One, public comments, at this time, no action can be taken. At this time, members of the public may comment on any item not appearing on the agenda and within the subject matter jurisdiction of Planning Commission Board. Individual comments will be limited to maximum of five minutes per person, and each person may speak once during this time. Time cannot be yielded to another person. Under state law, matters presented during the public comment period cannot be discussed or acted upon for record purposes. State your name and city of residence, please make your comments directly to the Planning Commission Board. Are there any public comments at this time? No. Seeing none, moving forward. Consent calendar. All items listed on the consent calendar are to be acted upon by a single action of the Planning Commission Board unless otherwise requested by an individual Planning Commission member for special consideration. Otherwise, the recommendation of staff will be accepted and acted upon, roll call vote. We're gonna take items one and two right now, and item three, we're gonna vote on.
Separately.
Separately.
Move for approval of item 2.1 and 2.2.
Second.
Okay, Chair McKenney.
Oh, yes.
Vice Chair King.
Yes.
Commissioner Stewart.
Yes.
Commissioner Tobacco.
Yes.
And Commissioner McRitchie.
Yes.
Okay, that passes five oh.
Okay, so we're gonna go ahead and vote on items 2.3?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Approval of the minutes of November 21st, 2017 Planning Commission meeting. Having been read by the individual commissioners and stated approved as submitted. Will we motion to approve item 2.3?
Uh, a moment.
Okay.
In the language, I'm not sure if I have the right place and the right time here, but Mr. Tobacco was not at the meeting. Is that the right one? Okay, is that, I wasn't sure if it was that one or if it was the one before, but anyhow, if we got that corrected, where he didn't vote because he wasn't there and I voted in his place, okay.
That was the November 6th, so we have that.
Okay, all right.
Okay, so we're okay to?
So I'd like to make a motion for the approval of item 2.3.
I'll second it.
Chair McKenney.
Yes.
Vice Chair King.
Yes.
Commissioner Stewart.
Yes.
And Commissioner Tobacco.
Yes.
And Commissioner McRitchie.
Yes.
That passes four.
Alrighty. Item three, public hearing presentation. Item 3.1. Development Agreement Number 02-217/Resolution Number 2017-027, and Conditional Use Permit 05-2-2017, Resolution Number 2017-028, Department File 17-0017, Riverbank Cannabis Collective. The project consists of development agreement and a conditional use permit, a commercial cannabis dispensary at 6609 Third Street, APN 132-011-019. The project site consists of approximately 3,100 square feet, and the existing vacant building is 6,588 square feet. The project site has a general plan, land use designation of mixed use, and is zoned general commercial, and is also located in the downtown specific planned area.
Good evening, Chair, and Commission members, and the audience. So, how did the city get to this point? In the beginning, about, well, right after Proposition 64, our council was dead set against having cannabis uses here in the city. Well, we brought them information as we were getting it from the state, and throughout the past, say, 12, 14 months, we have had 10 public hearings and workshops, and the city council has worked really hard to bring forth the best interests of the city. We all know that the black market exists for cannabis. It's already an underlying problem, and the city feels it needs to be regulated because we have no resources currently to combat the black market. So we feel that it is in the best interests of the city to regulate and get rid of the black market. And how do we address problems if we don't regulate it? For example, some of the problems are that the city doesn't have enough police, some, our numbers are way low what they should be to take care of a city of this size. But where's that money going to come from? Part of the regulation of it is bringing in the needed resources to enhance our police department and our special services in the city. With no regulations, there's no state grants to hire additional police officers. There would be no public benefit fees like some of these dispensaries are willing to pay to help us get the police officers that we need. So, we're entertaining tonight this development agreement and conditional use permit, and the way this process works is the conditional use permit regulates the site, and it goes in front of the Planning Commission to actually make a decision to approve or deny it. The second step is the development agreement, and that is adopted by ordinance. So it needs to go in front of the Planning Commission first for a recommendation, and then if, then it moves on to the city council for their approval or denial. So tonight, we are looking at a conditional use permit and a recommendation for a development agreement to the city council. The general plan zoning, or, excuse me, the general plan designation for the, the site of this dispensary is mixed use. It's in the downtown specific plan, and it's zoned downtown core. And the green star is the actual location. Many of you know it as the Riverbank Hotel, which is right next door. Here is an existing site plan of the site. There are approximately seven parking spaces behind the building that could be utilized for staff. You can see there are, there is street parking on Third Street in front of the building. And while we mentioned that the building is approximately 6,600 square feet, the dispensary only intends to utilize the first floor, which is 3,300 square feet. Here's a floor plan of the building. There is the entrance off of Third Street with a small portion of the lower floor blocked off for the stairway to the second story. But there would be the entrance and waiting area, the actual sales area, and several offices and rooms for some of the activities they will be having if this project is approved. The elevations of the building are as such, they do not intend to change them other than to, you know, paint and, and clean it up and make it a nice addition to the downtown. The development agreement, and what that is, is the city would enter into an agreement with the dispensary owners instead of applying, or going out city-wise for a tax. The major elements of this development agreement is a, it's a three-year term, so at the end of the three years, if either they are not happy or the city is not happy, this can all be renegotiated. It would be, the majority of the use is medicinal cannabis, but they intend to have adult-use cannabis onsite as well. I mentioned earlier a public benefit. What the public benefit fee is, is we know that new businesses and something like this would have burdens on our infrastructure and our services. So to compensate for that benefit, to say, help us get additional police officers, they have agreed to pay a certain amount a month, so for the first six months, $10,000 a month, or a percentage of the gross receipts, the great, whichever is the greater. For the seven to 12 months, it would be $15,000 a month, and then the last two years, it would be $18,000 a month, or a percentage of the gross receipts. These type of funds would go into the city's accounts. They could be used for police officers, for vehicles, for upgrading the police station. They could be used for software, so we could track, track this. It would be used for additional code enforcement officers. Currently, the city only has one code enforcement officer. So there would be a citywide benefit from these public benefit fees. The DA needs to be consistent with the general plan. Needs to not be detrimental to the health, safety, and general welfare of the city. It needs to not affect orderly development or property values. It needs to be consistent with the government code which regulates development agreements, and it must contain a legal description of the property. Both the city attorneys, as well as the applicants and city staff, have reviewed the documents and have been able to make those findings enough to bring them to the Planning Commission tonight. Now, the conditional use permit would bring additional requirements for the project site itself. It would, for example, provide the hours of construction for the work that they do inside, so it doesn't bother the neighbors. Exterior lighting conditions, so they have enough for security, but not enough to bother the neighbors. There's a whole harmless agreement, agreement in there. The dispensary, which actually is called the, or intends to be called the Riverbank Cannabis Collective, has submitted a security plan where they would contract with Tier One Concepts. The gentleman who looks at the site to see how it needs to be secure, the policies, the actual physical location itself is a retired Navy SEAL, a police officer. The property would be posted with signage that prevent loitering and trespassing. Parking. In the downtown specific plan, Main Street retail uses require two parking spaces for 1,000 square feet of area. They propose to use 3,300 square feet, so that's approximately seven parking spaces. And they're considered short-term spaces in our book. Somebody would just stop for five minutes or up to two hours to be considered short-term. In doing an analysis of the parking, there are six parking spaces plus one handicap spot in the rear that could be used for staff and vendors. There are 20 spaces and one handicap space in the parking lot across the street. Our downtown specific plan states that street parking and onsite parking can be used for downtown uses as long as it's within 800 feet of the business. On Third Street, considering both sides of Third Street in front of their building, there are 12 spaces and one handicap space. And there's also a handicap spot right next to City Hall, which adjoins their building right by the alley. So as you can see, there is plenty of parking for what we require for this use. So for general plan consistency, any development agreement and use permit concerning the regulation of cannabis activity should be consistent with a guiding principle of the general plan. Our city should be safe and healthy for our residents. And that is the goal of our city council, to regulate this and to get rid of the black market and focus on safety. Environmentally, since this is an existing building that's not expanding, it doesn't require a sequoia document like an EIR or a negative declaration because you can see with certainty that there's no impact on any plants or animals on the site. In fact, that site's been developed, and so there is, can't find those kind of things in a developed area. So, before I share, well, so, staff's recommendation is that the Planning Commission adopt the resolution to recommend to the city council that they approve the ordinance adopting the development agreement. And we also recommend that the Planning Commission approve the conditional use permit for this business. And I would like to have Deanna to step up and share a little bit more information. If you'd like to go ahead and introduce yourselves.
Thank you. Good evening, my name's Deanna Garcia, and I have here my team. We are FFA. Kimberly Cargile.
Hi, I'm Kimberly Cargile, I'm one of the Board of Directors of FFA, and we were hoping, is this our time to do our presentation? Okay, so we're all gonna talk a little bit about ourselves and our experience and what we bring to the teams. We'll come back to Deanna. There's a say more.
Hi. So I have been a cannabis farmer since 1996, and I was registered with the City of Sacramento as the first cannabis farmer who was not a dispensary owner. And I have been working with the City of Sacramento to bring regulations to cultivation. And in that time, I've met a lot of really nice, different city officials. They have come through and tour my cultivation site. And when they come through and tour my cultivation site, they go on a tour of a dispensary, a cultivation site, a manufacturer, and a testing lab. And over that time, the same question kept coming up. How do you see regulations, you know, in 2018? And the way I see it is, the more dispensaries and the more outlet we have for our cultivators and our manufacturers, the better our business will be because the more access we'll be getting out there to the correct people with the correct credentials to be able to use this fine medicine. And so, I've always had my products tested through Sequoia Laboratory, and before I brought it to the dispensary, to make sure I brought the best product I could bring. And now I have the opportunity to bring a dispensary to Riverbank, and I've teamed up with some very fine young ladies here who have knowledge in running a dispensary and have ran a beautiful, top-notch City of Sacramento dispensary. And I know together we'll make an awesome team and bring a lot of value to Riverbank. And I finally got a house to rent. Thank you, Jesus. That was very hard to find a house to rent in Riverbank when you come from being a property owner for the last 20 years, and now you have to go and rent a house, and people, it's very hard to rent a house. So, I found a home, and I'm a mother of five, and I've been married since I was 18, and my family's relocating here, and will now be a, a part of Riverbank and, and bring a lot of joy and benefit to your community.
Hi, my name is Danielle Gravel, and I currently am the Director of Riverbank Cannabis Collective, and the General Manager at a Therapeutic Alternative until I transition. As Deanna mentioned, a therapeutic alternative is a model dispensary in the City of Sacramento. We are located where a dispensary shouldn't be, directly across the street from a school, next to a park. Our neighbors love us, they speak of us admirably. They enjoy our security team's presence. They're friendly but stern, they can call on them if they need them. I never in my life thought I would personally be standing here talking about opening a cannabis dispensary. I spent 27 years of my life never touching cannabis, and I didn't until Western medicine failed me. So I have a very rare neurological misfire which causes me to get sick continuously. Sick meaning vomit over and over and over, which is unpleasant for anyone to imagine. And every prescription I've ever tried, and every doctor that's ever looked at me has not come up with a solution. And so a partner of mine, after five years of dealing with this disorder, finally said, "Try cannabis." Never thought of it had, of having validity. Tried it myself, and in 20 minutes, I felt better. I could eat, I wasn't throwing up anymore. Prescription, you know, pharmaceutical anti-nausea medicines couldn't do what cannabis could do for me. So, I went on a path of studying it medically. I was a psychology student at the time, pursuing my degree, and I started looking at it for options outside of just nausea. And I realized that your human body has quite an indigenous cannabinoid system that nobody had talked about in my biology classes, that cannabis could react to your body for different conditions, and that it really did have a benefit. And once I figured this out, I knew I wanted to be in a more progressive state. I'm from the East Coast at the time, that wasn't looked upon as medically valid either. I made my way to California, I made my way to a therapeutic alternative. I learned more than I ever thought I could ever imagine about cannabis and the human body, and got politically involved and started going to local meetings in Sacramento. And once I realized how much it could benefit other people who aren't aware that it couldn't benefit them, I really needed to step up and support it. And whether you support adult use or medical use or not, I think it's important to allow people to at least have access in a safe, educated, responsible environment, and that's what we provide, and that's what we want to provide for Riverbank. And I love this town because it's a small town that reminds me of the town I grew up in, and I will be relocating here with my boyfriend as well in the next couple months. And we hope that you guys will all come see us. You can come see us at a therapeutic alternative. We're under construction until we do open, so if you want to see what a responsible, reputable dispensary is like, you can come visit us. Anyone is welcome in Sacramento, and visit us at therapeutic alternative.
And my name's Kimberly Cargile, I've been studying natural medicine for 20 years now. I've been in the medical cannabis industry for 15 and have been managing dispensaries and a patient's rights advocate for over a decade. I'm currently the Executive Director of a therapeutic alternative, a model dispensary that was used to help pass regulations on the state level. So, next year, when patients go to any collective in the state of California, they will have standards that we have at a therapeutic alternative, including security, properly packaged and labeled products, childproof packaging, all products will be lab-tested, all managers and owners will be background-checked, and patients will have safe access and standards throughout California. It's something we've been advocating for, for almost 10 years now. So we're very happy that that's passed. I studied cellular molecular biology and was pre-med in college for five years and worked my way through college as a personal fitness trainer and yoga instructor. And I started learning about natural medicines. I was going to Humboldt State University at the time, so I started learning about cannabis. And what I have learned as I've studied the science of cannabis over the years is that we actually have an endocannabinoid system, and our body makes the same molecular structure that the plant makes. The plant's called phyto-cannabinoids, and our body makes endocannabinoids. And it's really amazing that this plant has been used for thousands of years as a medicine, and we're now in this country just starting to rediscover it and find out its great benefits, this non-toxic medicine. So we have a PowerPoint presentation that we're gonna go through so that we can help just pass on some of the education we've learned over the years in a really quick amount of time to the citizens of Riverbank and to our Planning Commission. Okay. So, just to kind of give you guys a little history, you know, cannabis has been around for thousands of years. Whether God has created it for us, or we have evolved with it, everyone has different beliefs on how we got here today. But either way, we have an endocannabinoid system, and this plant works synergistically with our bodies. It's been used for thousands of years as a medicine. Up here lists the different documented historical uses, going back to China and India, going back to Scotland, going back through the US. Actually, cannabis was one of the top medicines in this country up until the 1930s. So cannabis was used as medicine for many, many years. Actually, when Congress outlawed it in 1937, it was the American Medical Association that stood up against it and said, you know, "Please don't outlaw this medicine. If you do, I'm sure that we will not be able to find out more about the beneficial uses of this medicine." And, as you may know, that our country has a lot of interests, and many of the interests at this time, including the petrochemical industry and the timber industry and a few other industries, the alcohol industry, we're kind of against cannabis because of its many uses. Cannabis has been used, hemp has been used for fuel, for food, for clothing, for many, many years. Actually, the first law on the books in this country was a decree by King James in 1600 that said the colonists had to grow hemp. That was the first law on the books, it was a mandatory grow hemp. Because it was used so, I mean, so much throughout our country, you know, the first, one of the first flags that Betsy Ross made was made on hemp. One of the first documents signed by the Declaration of Independence was hemp paper, and it was widely used in our country. So, it wasn't that it didn't have medicinal uses that it was taken out of the pharmacopeia, it was because of political reasons. At this time, over 29 states actually have laws on the books that allow some kind of cannabis use. So we are making some headway on the federal level to be able to take it off of the Schedule I, which is the problem that's the conflict between federal and state law. We are moving in the right direction as more and more states and more and more citizens throughout the United States vote for this non-toxic alternative to pharmaceuticals and alcohol. There are a number of conflicts between the federal law within itself. I just point out this one, the US Patent 6630507, is actually a patent on the molecular structure of cannabidiol, or CBD, used as a neuroprotectant. You may have heard a lot about CBD in the news. It's one of the compounds in cannabis, the psycho, non-psychoactive cannabinoid that works on the nervous system. And Dr. Sanjay Gupta, Dr. Oz have all talked about its benefits in helping relieve symptoms of epilepsy. Once again, cannabis is a non-toxic alternative. According to the Center for Disease Control, zero deaths are attributed to cannabis use every year. And as you know, there are many other drugs out there that are legal that are actually killing people. And cannabis, because there are not cannabinoid receptors in the part of the brain that regulates respiratory and heart function, that is the reason. um, that is the reason why that there are no overdoses. Whereas opioids, um, actually have a great amount of overdose associated with them. And we've seen, um, in states that allow medical cannabis, opioid overdose is actually going down by anywhere from five to fifteen percent. Um, so that is actually one of the reasons I'm an advocate of cannabis as an alternative to alcohol and pharmaceuticals is because if someone does take too much, they, you know, have negative side effects associated with it, but they are awake the next day and they're here to, um, learn from their mistakes. The endocannabinoid system is a system that, um, that modulates how the cannabinoids affect us. Each of the cannabinoids, and there's approximately fifty, we lab test for about ten. And the products we provide, um, have, we provide high cannabinoids in CBD, THC, THCA, um, CBN and THCB are the main cannabinoids on the market today. But each of them cause different pharmacological effects on the body. And these dots on the human body here, these are receptor sites of the CB1 and CB2 receptors in our body. The cannabinoids, um, the phyto-cannabinoids from the plants are the same molecular structure as cannabinoids that we make in our body and attach to these receptor sites and cause different effects. And so that's why so many different symptoms can be treated with cannabis because all cannabis is not the same. There's thousands of different strains and within each strain, there's different, um, endocana- there's different cannabinoid profiles causing different effects or relieving different symptoms. This is a beautiful picture of how, um, CBD works on the nervous system. Basically CBD works on the nervous system by reducing nerve inflammation, nerve pain, muscle spasms, seizures, anxiety. It basically reduces the neural transmission between cells. So it can be used, um, to reduce pain and inflammation, um, without causing any psychoactive effects. It actually reduces the psychoactivity if you take too much THC. This is the cannabis man. Um, you can't see it very well, but it goes over the different cannabinoids and the products that we carry and what, um, effects are associated with the different cannabinoids. This is another chart of the different cannabinoids, going over, um, what effects are associated with them. So when a patient comes to us, our first question is, "What are your symptoms?" Based on each specific symptom, we may recommend a different cannabinoid profile and a different administrative technique. These are some of the administrative techniques that we have. These are the potpourri. Pain patches. And inhalers. This is a pain spray. Capsules. These are microtugs. They're kind of like a baby aspirin. They absorb subtly. We have oils for, um, these are typically used for our cancer and epileptic patients. This is a high CBD oil. We have vaporizers, as well as microdose edibles. Each of these reasons is one milligram. It's a very easy way to learn how to use cannabis without taking too much. And taking too much is something no patient wants to experience. Um, the negative side effects associated with taking too much C- THC can be sedation and kind of a feeling of, um, uneasiness, loss of motor skills. It's kind of an overdose feeling of, um, feeling kind of disconnected. It's the high feeling that people talk about and that's actually a side effect that people don't want to experience. And so we're trying to teach patients how to take the correct amount of cannabis so that they can be better parents, they can do their job, they can be out of pain, they can sleep better without having the negative side effects. So it's all about education. It's all about understanding the administrative techniques, understanding the symptoms, the cannabinoid profiles, and recommending the correct dosage and the correct administrative technique for our patients. This goes over some of the, um, symptoms and disorders, illnesses that we see the most of at a therapeutic alternative and the specific cannabinoids that we recommend for them. Terpenes are other molecules, are other active ingredients that we're just starting to study. They're the smell molecules. So when you smell cannabis, what you're smelling are terpenes. And terpenes are found in all different kinds of plants, the same molecules. So the same molecule, linolol, that's found in lavender is also found in cannabis. Pineen, found in pine trees, is also found in cannabis. Beta carophyllene, found in black pepper, is also found in cannabis. And that's why all the different strains smell differently. But they also co- help with, um, the physiological effects. So linolol produces relaxing effects in lavender, while it also does the same thing in the strains that have la- uh, linolol in them of cannabis. Um, pinen is invigorating. The pine smell, lemonine is invigorating. Well, sativa strains that have those terpenes in them also provide invigorating effects. We're just now starting to study terpenes and it's very fascinating science. This is our location. These are some of our poli- policies and membership guidelines. Um, we are known as being, you know, the strictest dispensary in Sacramento. We hear that from our patients all the time. But it's for good reason. We want to make sure that we're making a positive impact on our community, that we don't have any loitering, we don't have anyone, um, you know, dropping trash on the ground, no ingesting or smoking cannabis, um, not leaving people in the car. We make sure with our cameras and our security guards that our patients are following our rules at all times. And our patients get such good, have such good experience with us. They really value their membership. We rarely actually have to enforce any rules or revoke memberships because they really care about, um, keeping their membership with us. Our intention is to bring together our community by raising their conscious- consciousness and providing them with compassion. And not only are we focused on providing the best quality products for our patients, but that really ties into our educated staff. And educating our staff when we, um, first hire them, they go through extensive training as well as ongoing continuing education. So when patients come to us, we can make sure that our staff knows how to help a patient find the right medication for them. We are here to answer any questions tonight. And we would, um, enjoy giving a tour of a therapeutic alternative to anyone who would like to come visit us. Here's our contact information. It didn't look like this when we did it earlier. It's the formatting's off. But, um, these are our phone numbers and email addresses. So anybody can contact us with any questions. If you have a friend or family member who's suffering from a condition, we'd be happy to help, give you information, point you in the right direction. Or if you're just interested in finding out about the laws, we're extremely involved in the entire state process and have been since the very beginning. So we're here to answer any questions. Thank you so much.
Kim?
Yes.
Could you take just a quick moment to, um, explain the additional services that a membership would, um, allow folks to have?
Absolutely. So, um, we, I don't know if you're able to bring up the floor plan, but we have two service rooms. And we have two, um, service rooms at a therapeutic alternative also. We probably should have put our calendar of services up there. But, um, we provide a full holistic health center. So we provide, um, at a therapeutic alternative, when we will work with therapists here in Riverbank and surrounding areas to provide massage therapy, aromatherapy, sound therapy, yoga, guided meditation, Reiki, which is like an energy therapy, which is wonderful for patients who are in intense pain because, um, they don't actually have to be touched. It's just kind of like moving energy through, um, our bodies. And whether we believe it or not, it's true. And we're all made up of energy. It can't be created or destroyed, only transferred. Um, and so, um, we have therapists who help our patients. Um, we're trying to help our patients really find the root cause of their pain or their suffering and help them with a variety of, um, different therapies. Um, not only providing them with cannabis therapy, but providing them with education and free services. So the, the goal is just to introduce people to these therapies because it's not covered by insurance. So we provide them complimentary for our patients so they can, um, see if it's something that they would like to do. They can continue to come back to us for complimentary sessions. But typically they start to work with a therapist on their own and then they will pay that therapist. So it's a bit mutually beneficial for the therapists that work with us also.
Thank you.
Questions? Nope.
I don't, do we have any questions for her? Okay, this is a, we, this is a public hearing. Um, once again, um, everyone is, is, uh, allotted five minutes for their presentation. And, um, the floor is open for public hearing. If you have any questions, please approach the podium. Please remember to give your name and place of residence. Speak into the mic.
My name is Fred Wood, three-four-zero-one Sierra, which is just right around the corner. Riverbank, California. If I understand right, we're not here to discuss the science really, or the legality of it. But we, we're not making them decisions tonight. But as a dad and as a concerned citizen, as a school teacher here at Adelante High School, as a pastor of Riverbank Colonnies Church, I have three main concerns about the location. Location and location. That's my three concerns. Uh, yes, Riverbank downtown, we all know needs help. I live one block away from downtown. Yes, we know that the Riverbank Motel, uh, needs help. We need a good business there. And yes, we know Riverbank can, can always use more money. And, uh, it sounds like there's a lot of profit in this and lots of money would come Riverbank way. But the location is less than a half mile from the youth center, the teen center. About a half mile away from Adelante High School. Less than a half mile away from Cardozo Middle School and less than a half mile away from the skate park. And I just find that it's going to open problems up for our youth. Our youth already have lots of problems. And, uh, there's always, already lots of laws trying to protect our youth from tobacco, from marijuana, from alcohol. And we all know that them laws are not being enforced and not, they, they get them. They get all that. And, uh, we have to deal with that as teachers at school. And so I just find a problem with the, uh, location, uh, being so close to so many children. There's a lot of youth in the downtown area, uh, different times of the day. And, uh, lots and lots of youth coming and going and I just find a, a problem with the location of this. So I'd like to make, I'd like for the, uh, for the planning commission to, to, uh, make a rec- recommendation that this be placed somewhere else, not right here in this location. Thank you.
I'm Haskell Moore, thirty-eight forty-eight Patterson Road. I have property thirty-two sixteen Stanislaw Street, just around the corner. I have a block of this cannabis shop that wants to come in here. Strangely you'd be here. I read that SOB Saturday morning where, uh, Deanna Garcia was turned down in Modesto for cannabis permit. Uh, shop boutique, medical spa, on-site consumption, massage and cannabis screens. I just happened to see that in Modesto. I was trying to find last Tuesday council meeting that wasn't, wasn't on your, uh, website, Wednesday, Thursday or Friday. I found that strange too. Okay, so we've got five minutes here, right? And that's it. Mr. Bryan sitting in the backseat's one, we got that, right? Catholic Church, Ganji Brothers. I have found out that you plan on the cannabis grow to happen in two warehouses that borders right beside the Catholic Church off one oh eight, on the curb by the Pidaw. Um, I've learned that about three or four days ago. So that's the two big old warehouses that Ganji had there, that they didn't tear down with everything else. You should have mailed, everyone in Riverbank should have been invited to these meetings, not just the people within three hundred feet and not just the property owners. I ran across a few vendors, said they didn't know this and I brought their attention. This is going to happen tonight. Uh, that isn't right. They're within three hundred feet of where this place is going to, going to be, uh, be built. Also, the way your property goes down tremendously when you have this in your area. Uh, and I don't think that it's safe for kids in the area. We have a lot of kids in this area, around this location. Got a lot of seniors that don't want it. I didn't know how many kids did right around the property I have on Stanislaw Street until I knocked on my two doors. A cannabis shop on the south side, on the south side, uh, a restaurant, a restaurant and a home is on the south side of this place. Their yards border one another, fences between them. But still, yeah, that's like twenty feet apart. You got on the, um, on the west side, you got a doctor's office, it's about a hundred and fifty foot long, bottom, bottom floor. The top floor is two three bedroom apartments. There's children in it also. That's about twenty-five feet from the back fence of this cannabis shop you want to put in. And then on the, um, east side, where you're saying you can park across the street there from this cannabis shop, I think that's Park of Upmost City. You say there is, uh, twenty parking spaces there. I counted this morning, I counted seventeen and a handicap. And the, and the twelve places you say you have in front that place to park, I don't see how. You got a restaurant beside it on the, uh, on the right side. And people are parking on Third Street at the, um, Bardoni Building and the vendors there don't have a place to park. They come to come to pay the water bill right across the street. So if you got that going on and you got people coming, going there and it's going to be a spa or whatnot, cannabis users on site, those cars aren't going to be leaving too soon to come there. You got, um, so you got people, you got homes on both sides. My house is right across the street from the, uh, doctor's office. A church is beside my house. A block down the road, you got Mr. Neal's Church, Assembly of God. And Modesto has, uh, Modesto has a hundred feet from residence, five hundred from daycare feet and, and schools. What is ours here? Nobody can talk. We can't find that out. I just have a couple more things here. I covered that. Uh, Modesto turned down, um, I think it was the councilship that turned it down. They want to put a cannabis shop on Yosemite Avenue and Long's Drug Store, where the old Long's Drug Store was, a lot of people will remember that, on McKinney Avenue. That was turned down, both those locations. And I think that maybe Ms. Garcia might be here because of one of those locations being turned down. I don't know. But I know I've seen her name in the paper. I just happened to write that down. Thank goodness. And with the same, with the same restrictions, uh, applied to cannabis users and marijuana smokers-
Thirty seconds.
-as it does the cigarette smokers, fifty feet from a building. Um, I live on the southeast side of this town. And right now, while it isn't legal, on a warm day, you can't stand and be outside from smelling marijuana, which I don't really care for. So if you don't use marijuana, you shouldn't have to use it in secondhand smoke.
I would just like to clarify that, um, there will be no consumption on-site, either smoking. Oops, sorry. Thirty seconds. Or five minutes. Um, there's no consumption on-site. There will be no smoking. There will be no ingesting. There will be no, uh, CBD oils used. Uh, the only thing that will be used for massages is hemp oil that you can buy across the counter in any sort of spas. So I just wanted to clarify that before anybody else gets back up. Um, it may have been proposed in Modesto. It's not proposed for here.
Okay, great.
I, I do have a question. Yeah, the gentleman mentioned something.
Do we, we don't-
No, I'm asking Donna. I'm sorry, for staff.
I, I recommend, uh, that the commission hold, uh, questions until public comment's over so then we can combine them all and, and address them all at one time.
Okay, uh, floor's still open for public, uh, comments at this time, so please approach swiftly. And remember your name, place of residence.
Hello, my name is Neil Singh. I live on Deep River Court, Riverbank. Um, I appreciate you guys' time. Thank you. So I'm for having a dispensary, but I just hope that you guys understand what goes into a dispensary. It's more than just a retail store. There's distributions that have to come in. People have to come in and sell these dispensary's product. So these other companies are coming from other, other cities, other places. The state is taxing each hand that it travels in. Why isn't Riverbank doing that? I think that it would be wise to, yes, jump on the cannabis game, but look at it from a different point of view if you are going to jump on it. Yeah, the zoning rules, that is a big thing. I don't think anybody understands the foot traffic that comes into one of these dispensaries. There is a lot of people that come into it. Um, I know from personal experience. I've worked at a dispensary and now I'm partners with one. I own Treelife Farms in Calaveras County. It's a commercial cannabis farm. I've been around the industry. I've seen it. I own Treelife Farms in Calaveras County. It's a commercial cannabis farm. I've been around the industry, I've seen it. I think as being a resident of Riverbank, we should definitely look at this and take advantage of every obstacle. If we allow, uh, one dispensary, two dispensaries that have permits to do everything on-site, we're only making ten thousand, okay, a month. Now, if we allowed a distribution, which is only two thousand square feet of warehouse space, these guys don't need very much, a grow site on, remember, Riverbank's pretty big. There's plenty of spots to do grow sites, and I'm not saying outdoor. I'm not a fan of outdoor. I don't like the smell at all. So there's, people don't like the smell. There's ways around that with indoor. We do light deprivation style in Calaveras County where we use a filtration system where you can't even smell it. So there's other ways around it, and I, I like the fact that as being a citizen of Riverbank, I, I think that we should all have an opportunity to open one of these businesses, not just a, a, a dispensary or a distribution or a grow. There, there's more to it. If you look in Prop sixty-four, I think there's like eighteen different categories you can sign up for. There's a lot, a lot to it. I think Riverbank should take advantage of each of every single one of those categories. It's, we could almost adopt the same plan as surrounding cities. I think we should even look at that before we go ahead and make a decision of, hey, we're going to do this dispensary, we're going to go this way. There's a lot more obstacles to look at. If you look at a liquor store, they have to get their product from somewhere. There's so many different vendors. Why as a citizen do I, why would I want people coming from the Bay Area, LA, coming all the way here with their products when we could have just had that right there in Riverbank? I don't know. It makes more sense if we are going to allow something to make money for our city, to take every advantage that we can. And like I said, I appreciate you guys' time, and I'm glad that you guys are, are looking into this, but let's look at it as a team a little bit more, I guess, in-depth of how we can make money off every obstacle rather than just the dispensary side and ten thousand dollars. That's petty money, I'm telling you. That's petty money in this industry. Being a farmer and working at, at a retail store, that's, that's petty money in this. So I appreciate you guys' time. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, commissioners. Excuse me, Gerald Schneider, sixty-six hundred Candlewood Circle, Riverbank, California. So the, uh, commissioners are here trying to decide on what's best interest of the city. And the city, of course, is all of us as residents here. I'd like to go back a little bit on the cannabis issue and say it was approved by the voters of the state of California. I can't, won't make comment on the wisdom of that. But the funding for the advocacy of cannabis in California, in the US, is made primarily by George Soros and Peter Lewis, with, uh, George alone contributing about four million a year to promote the cannabis. This was a great presentation by Danielle, great history and medical lesson. Um, and if this shop was for medical cannabis, everything she said hit the nail on the head. What I'm more interested in is what is called the, uh, adult or recreational side of this cannabis. It's, uh, regulations are being new as far as I'm concerned, and needs to be approached with a great deal of caution. How many Riverbank businesses require security guards? And I believe mandated cameras? Doesn't that give you an inkling of the type of concern you should have over this business? I believe the presentation tonight, uh, would rival some of P.T. Barnum's best. Please be cautious. I realize it's the state of California approved method. I have a niece who's growing now in another county, and a brother-in-law who's processing. I think we're sailing our youth down the river. And I appreciate your deep concern, and I'm glad you got the job, and I don't.
Okay, thank you very much.
Hello, everyone. Uh, I'm Jeff Von Essen. I've, um, I live on six oh three one Crossroads Drive. Um, basically, uh, North Landing, so right before Crossroads. Um, I've lived here in my entire life. I'm young. I'm twenty-three. I've lived here for twenty-three years, okay? Um, so coming from me, I know, uh, the cup, the, the things the gentlemen have been saying before me, they hit the nail right on the head. I now feel like just, uh, I'm backing them up. I am the youth they're talking about. Well, being that I grew up here, I've, uh, I've established a lot of connections here. I've done, um, well, Scott McGritchy, he was out there in the cold with me, built, doing my Eagle Scout project over at Jacob Myers. You know, he sees, I've put roots here. And so coming from me, you hear, I've seen every single side of it. Uh, this younger gentleman that just spoke, he's totally correct. There is a lot of money. There could be a lot of money, sure. But what are you doing to me now? Is it, how much money are we talking about? What, what is it? Eighteen thousand dollars? That's chump change. That's the, that's what the club's willing to give you guys to just be there? Think about how much they're making. Think about how much, and I've heard that, what, they can't run it through a, a credit card system? Uh, so it's all cash? Well, and we have also the adult use, bringing up the, the previous gentleman's comment about that. What is adult use? Is that the therapeutic use of hemp oil? Because when I think of adult use of alcohol, we think of, uh, going to a bar and overindulging and getting a ride home. Or driving drunk and facing the consequences of killing someone. Everyone affects differently to the uses of this substance, just as everyone affects differently to the uses of every other substance. While we're talking about it compared to any other drug, how are we supposed to, um, basically, uh, dose ourselves correctly when each raisin we eat is another milligram? It's gonna take, what, twenty, twenty-five milligrams to make someone act high or dumb or not in the correct way they should? Everyone has too many beers now, now and then, right? Or too many drinks now and then. How are you supposed to, uh, how are you supposed to stop that from happening with this adult use? And i- i- it's true. All the medicinal properties, it might make people feel better. There is, uh, medical, um, use for it. But why do we have to have it there in the location? If I'm not correct, Modesto, they have it zoned industrial. It has to be an industrial area. That's why they won't let it downtown. It's zoned, what, Riverbank core? If, I'm not exactly particular what that means, but that sounds like something that is the core to downtown. Something that is a major structure. For example, you have the, the place that everyone knows, Del Rio Theater. That's zoned, what, Riverbank core? Because eventually that building might have something to do with it. I know it's been in the wrong hands. It's had trouble as a structure. But we're talking about the core of Riverbank. When people say, I think of Riverbank, I think of Riverbank Collective Care. That's where, oh, that's where I went. I, uh, got marijuana and I used it as an adult. Or what are we, what are we talking about here? All this together. The location is terrible, number one. I don't want that there. That puts a huge stress on me as, and, and as far as the people under me, they already have enough stress. They don't need to deal with eating the wrong raisins and getting high going to school. Or, uh, whatever that might entail of them having easier access to it. Any argument for this being there has so much worse consequences if you look down the road. And I can see that because I am a young resident. I do plan on, uh, having a life here in the next ten, twenty years. And so I can see the future of what would happen. It brings in so many worse, uh, problems than it does fix anything. Yes, maybe a medical marijuana, um, collective in Riverbank. No, not in downtown. No, not on the highway. No, not anywhere you can see it. Industrial. We have that-
Thirty seconds.
We have that lovely park over on Claus. Industrial. No one's near it. No, or, or anywhere else. But you don't need something that people drive right past, oh, look, there's the Medical Marijuana Collective, or here's a church right here, here's the skate park. That's another thing. How do you control people buying alcohol from the liquor store and selling it to a minor? You don't. So what's gonna happen with this? There's already two little cops, and I guarantee you eighteen thousand dollars isn't gonna make a difference.
Okay, thank you very much. Name, place of residence?
My name is R. Three, Adolfo. I live here, City of Riverbank, sixty-seven thirty, San Isamo Way. I came to the meeting last week-
Hey, why don't you get a little closer to the mic, please?
I came to the meeting last, um, Tuesday night. And one of the big things they kept saying was about the location and how great this was gonna be for our community. I strongly disagree with that. So they challenged me to do my homework. So I did. And when the ladies on the table, I wish all you guys would take a living at that. This right here is from one of the officers from the City of Modesto that is unhappy about what's going on as well. This is a study from Colorado from two thousand and six to present on the effects that marijuana has had since they have allowed it. So two thousand and six to two thousand and eight is the pre-commercial part of this. Two thousand and nine, two thousand and eleven is the pre-commercialization, or the commercialization and the expansion era. Two thousand and twelve to two thousand and thirteen is the recreational marijuana. So now that you guys all have it sitting in front of you, it's divided up into six areas. Section one, impaired driving. Marijuana-related traffic incidents have gone up forty-eight percent since they allowed it. All traffic death increased eleven percent. You guys say that you guys and our city council that's not here today, I wish I could address them, say that you're doing this for our best interest. I don't see. We argued last week about traffic coming up. This alone right here goes over traffic. It's not good. The youth that we're talking about here for the marijuana use, if you look at your thing, section two says has increased twenty percent in our youth using this. It has jumped from then to this date from fourteen on their scale to number one. That should scare you guys alone. I don't understand this. Yes, it has a medical benefit. But this is no good for nobody. The looting that's gonna go on, and it's not gonna happen at your guys' store or at the other store they wanna put in downtown, it's gonna happen in the neighborhoods that are adjacent to it. And nobody seems to care. Only thing that we keep hearing is how nice their shops are gonna be, how pretty it's gonna be, how good it is for this, how their security, their camera covers their building. Not my neighborhood. Not the parks that they're gonna be walking down in this area. It does no good for us. I'm gonna jump down to section four, where it talks about hospitalization on the case of the marijuana that's in there. And if you look down on it, it says, related to the marijuana, in two thousand and eleven, it was six thousand three hundred and five, twelve, six thousand seven hundred and fifteen, thirteen, eight thousand two hundred and seventy-two, and in two thousand and fourteen, eleven thousand four hundred and thirty-nine. And it's just gonna keep climbing. I don't understand how you guys can say this is good for the city of Riverbank. I just, it just blows me away. The very last page, 'cause I know I'm running out of time, and it says right down here, as of January, the retail stores are four hundred and twenty-four retail marijuana stores in Colorado compared to three hundred and twenty-two Starbucks. They got more than Starbucks. There's two hundred and two McDonald's. Why do we need this stuff? Now, the last thing that we said at our council meeting on last week was the fact that my wife got up and said, this is the doorstep that you guys are doing to allow other drugs into this. So I did more. Right now, there is a bill-
Thirty seconds.
-in the House. Bill number twenty-three fifty-five to allow six major drugs to be decriminalized in California. They wanna put a safe house, just like they're trying to pitch to us here, for marijuana. They wanna do a safe house so they can do heroin, cocaine, methamphetamine, and ecstasy, where they can do it and they don't have to get hurt, so they don't have to overdose.
Five minutes.
Why? I don't understand. Why do you guys think this is such a good thing? We have morals. We were born with them. Why do we keep lowering our morals for society? I don't understand. So I'm pleading with you guys to please-
Appreciate it. Thank you very much. Any more comments from the floor? Please state your name, place of residence.
Hi, I'm Samajapani, a resident of Riverbank. Um, a lot of good points here. Um, ladies here seem, uh, concerned with people's health. Um, I'm not a doctor. Um, but I could tell you, you know, being, having a grandma that passed away and having to administer morphine, that wasn't the greatest either. I have other family members that have MS. We're doing holistic-type medicines that are not FDA, uh, qual, FDA quality. I understand where you're coming from. Um, but my concern is the legality of this here. Um, marijuana is against the law. And as we go forward here and looking at recreational use, um, my concern is we're gonna be pitting ourselves against the federal government. Um, I hear arguments, you know, how about alcohol prohibition? Well, I could tell a little bit about prohibition real quick. Um, Italian-American, my grandpa grew up with that. Uh, he had his, uh, say and influence over me. I've also worked, uh, with the BATF, Bureau of Alcohol, Tobacco and Farms, in compliance for several years. I worked at some of the biggest wineries around here, Gallo and Bronco Wine Company out in Series. We had to be down to the T. We had to follow compliance here, and if we didn't, we, they would shut us down here. I don't see how we're being compliant with the federal government on this end. We're, we're pitting ourselves against the federal government. And I understand that there might be medical, uh, purposes here, and I have sympathy if it does work for you. Um, but the FDA hasn't approved it. They, they say there's other alternatives that are, are better than, uh, medical marijuana. Again, I'm not a doctor, but I'm gonna have to go by the federal government on this one until we influence them that it isn't, and then put it through pharmacies instead of having separate, uh, institutions to do this. Um, but my concern is the future here. We're looking at a review matter going forward here. We, as California, this is brand-new legislation that California has passed, even though it's against the federal law. Um, not sure if you, if you think you know what you're getting into here. I mean, we talk about getting rid of the black market. Um, again, my, my experience with prohibition, the reason why prohibition, in my opinion, uh, and in my experience, didn't work is because you had a lot of people that consumed alcohol, like, you know, a lot of Italians did, and didn't think anything of it. I mean, we consumed it, but it's the overconsumption that is increasing. And what happened with prohibition, it criminalized people that didn't think anything was wrong with consumption of alcohol. The, the, um, the idea is you're not consuming something to get drunk. You're consuming it because it's to be part of your meal, or in church, you know? Uh, if you do holy communion. Um, but, um, as I was growing up, overconsumption was a sin. You don't do that. Uh, when, when it comes to marijuana and the recreational use, that's a sin because you're purposely trying to alter your, your mind. Um, and having this, uh, having institutions, dispensaries put in, um, doesn't help any, and, and I have a feeling a lot of this stuff, maybe not you, but a lot of these people are gonna, you'd be using this as an excuse to take more marijuana here. Um, it's easy to get a prescription from a doctor. They, they write them all the time. Hey, no problem. And people that have an addiction will continue on. I don't see anything, we were talking about safety. I don't see anything about addressing the, the reduction of use or consumption or production of the drug. Um, all I see is, you know, they're doing it, it's the black market, we have no control. Let's just regulate it and exploit the people are taking, or, or using this. And I think we should be looking at this in a different aspect- we should be looking at this in a different aspect as far as helping the people out that maybe are, have an addiction. Um, I, I feel, I feel sorry for the people. I know people personally that smoke marijuana, or some of them are addicted to it. And then they go on to other things too. It's a gateway drug too. And a lot of people that smoke marijuana will tell you, "You know, I started with marijuana and it's a gateway. I went to other things." Um, so I just wanted to give you take, uh, give a take on this that-
Thirty seconds.
Okay, it's not the same as prohibition. Uh, if you wanna compare it to something, it's more like the opium trade of China, okay? And you could look up the history of that. Um, of course marijuana is not, uh, like opium, but opium was used also in China for medicinal uses too. It became, it became an epidemic and bad things happened, and, uh, you could look up the history on that.
Okay, thank you very much.
Alright, thank you.
Alrighty. Anyone else? Members, state your name, place of residence.
My name is Letizia Hidalgo. I've lived in Riverbank for over thirty years, and I'm here to voice my concern about the dispensaries and, uh, uh, shops going into this community. Um, just as like the others have stated, that it's a gateway drug. It's, um, going to have an effect on our youth. I have the same concerns. Uh, our children are here today, and I think of their future and all the residents' future here with their children. We're supposed to be role models to them and, and show them what it means to have moral and ethics, to show them that there is a future here, that we believe in them, that we have hope for them, and not to use drugs. That's what we're all taught as we're growing up and going through the school system, say no to drugs. But yet, we're allowing this into our community because of the taxes or the income that's going to be coming in. But why not be better and bigger and say, "You know what? There's a, they're going on in other places, but not here in Riverbank." We dare to be different. We dare to stand up and say no and fight for them. Because if we don't fight for them, as the residents, the council, the planning commission, who's going to stand up for the kids and their future? So I ask that you take everything into consideration, make this a place for families, for people to not be afraid to come to this community, to live here because of the potential drug use, the crime, uh, other issues that may come along. Um, it was mentioned about, you know, the, um, the alcohol use, but I see this as gun control. They put these laws into place to protect people from guns and the violence that comes with them. But a lot of this, the gun control is made for people who actually follow the law. The black market will be here regardless. People will get drugs regardless. They will get marijuana in other ways. Um, it's not going to stop it. It's just going to make it easier for those that are using other drugs to get it, and, um, also, um, there's one, I think it was mentioned, that it's less than five miles away from here, from town. So is five miles really that far away to go get the marijuana if you needed, if somebody actually needed it or wanted to purchase it? Why allow it here into our small community where everybody and every shop makes a difference? We wanna continue to be a small community, a positive environment, and, and foster our children to, to have a hope and future and to be whatever they wanna be. And that's all I have to say. Please take all that into consideration. Everybody's thoughts here.
Okay, thank you very much. Anyone else?
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Ramon Rangel de Mudes from Riverbank at sixty-two, sixty-one. Roselle, my dear street, that I have done so much for through the years. In October, I, um, completed, um, twenty-three years in Riverbank. In nineteen sixty-seven, I was at the Presidio San Francisco. Just to give you a little bit of background, I was at the US Army, Company C, USAG, and, uh, it was like heaven for a soldier. The last eight and a half months, I was sent to Vietnam. It was like hell for every soldier. I'll tell you Lieutenant Colonel's, uh, famous words. Hate the war, love the soldier, love the warrior. The reason why I bring you this is because it was very strong marijuana that we used to do from tie sticks. And I say "we" because I was, uh, fortunately and unfortunately involved. And we did it in a way for recreational, what we call it, to be in the rear area only. Anybody that got caught, what we call it, on the field, no, it won't be shot on sight, no. But, uh, pretty close to that. Because you cannot react properly when you are under the influence of marijuana. Tell me all the medical stuff that you want to do about it, if it is doing any good to these people, to these patients. Wonderful. Good for them. We had, um, Beni, what we call it, very little tiny pill like this that did a lot for the brain. Kept us awake for over twenty-four hours. One pill. We could hardly wait until we get back to the rear area. A week, ten days, give me, you know, in two weeks or whatever, but, but, uh, we were taken off from the rear to go and take the supplies in the trucks or caravans or by helicopter, and yet, we could hardly wait to come back to the rear those two days, or maybe three, to reload the trucks or the helicopters. But, on this matter, I'll tell you, it is true that the VA is doing some studies of all the effects that it might have in some people of the veterans. It is true that it can lead to harder drugs, like it's cocaine or methamphetamines, or whatever you wanna call it. But I'll tell you what. I never got hooked on the Benzodrine, what we call it, Benis. I was getting hooked on marijuana, unfortunately, because made me forget about reality, but also will not let me finish my projects or my, uh, home cleanup or things like that. And then, um, on the studies that they have at the VA, Veterans Administration, they say that, uh, one of the effects of marijuana, and I can say that is true, that, uh, you tend to get forgetful. So, at whatever age you are, you're getting Alzheimer's. Why will you look to get Alzheimer's? When you can just wait a few years, and maybe you'll get it, and free. And, uh, what was I talking about? You see, I thought- So anyway, I ask you, please, there is San Diego, California. There is Los Angeles, California. There is Fresno, California. There is San Francisco, California. And there is Sacramento, California, our capital of the state. Why not look up for places over there? In the area that is not-
Thirty seconds.
-with residents. Look for a place that is industrial. Look for a place that is acceptable. Keep it away, please, from problems with criminality that can go higher. It's true, marijuana leads to harder drugs. Thank you very much. Free attention. May I bless you all?
Thank you.
My name is Evelyn Halbert, and I'm a fifty-year resident of downtown. And I was down here before that when I spent summers with my grandparents. Um, the public notice that you posted stated that this project size was nine hun- nine thousand three hundred and seventy-five square feet, and the building was six thousand five hundred and eighty-eight. Now, your staff report says it's three thousand one hundred, so it kinda sounds like you're just wanting to do the first floor now and do the second floor later. But they sure don't match. On the parking, this has been an issue before. Um, there's been four other visits that are coming in that have got the parking new fees that you have given away parking space, city, street parking spaces to, to, or down there, Second Street, the cheese place. There's one around the corner, the other side of City Hall, that clinic is, that they gave several spaces to, and you gave a whole bunch of them to Del Rio. Now, you, now it sounds like this one is gonna get twenty out of the spaces out in the parking lot, plus all the spaces between Stanislaus and Third Street. So what happens to the city employees' parking? What happens to the people that wanna come down to City Hall, pay a water bill, do whatever they gotta do? Remember, when you did it, Del Rio, that you said something about getting that parking study done, which never happened. But you can't keep giving away the same spaces over and over. And there's a lot of seniors in the housing authorities, there's a lot of seniors around here. In your, uh, staff report, on page one, on the environmental determination, it's exempt from environmental review and CEQA because it says there is no possibility that it will have a significant feeling, uh, effect on the environment. And then farther back in there, it says that they're finding out that the development agreement will not, uh, be detrimental to the health, safety, and general welfare, and it won't affect the development of property and all that stuff. But then it turns right around and says that the project will provide RCC with substantial private benefits, but it will place burdens upon the city infrastructure, services, and neighborhoods. So they're gonna do this public benefit amount, which there's nothing in the city code about a public benefit amount, how it works, where the money goes, or anything. And it sounds like, you know, it's a good thing, but then when you look at Article Five, Public Facilities and the development agreement, it says the city shall use that amount, public benefit amount, all that money they're gonna collect for the im- to pay for the impact on maintenance or improvement of city neighborhoods and the existing level of service of city infrastructure and services to accommodate the project. So how is that supposed to help us? How's that supposed to help the city? Um, section two point nine gives the developer the right to rebuild, to renovate, whatever they want. That, uh, you call it Riverbank Hotel. We call it the Hidden Hotel if you've been around here long enough. That's a hundred-year-plus building. That's part of our history. It's historic. So how are you gonna protect that? 'Cause I haven't heard anything from developers that they even care about the history of it. The city doesn't seem to. How are you gonna protect our history? Are we gonna keep losing these old buildings? There should be something in there that they have to protect that. I also would like to know why your section point four seven, that they're, that they're not having to pay any city tax, or exempt from city taxes. Um, the other question I have is, um, there's only two owners listed on here. And I believe that all the owners have to be in agreement. And when I looked in the county documents on the assessors' website, there's four owners. I'm just wondering why the other two owners aren't listed. Did, did they okay it, give their consent? Because they list four owners, and each one has twenty-five percent, according to the records. And I definitely think it's-
Thirty seconds?
Huh?
Thirty seconds?
Okay, I definitely think it's in the wrong place for downtown, especially when you have the parking and the traffic issues.
Okay, thank you very much. Anyone else? Not at this time. Anyone else? Oh, sorry, anyone else? Okay, we're gonna close the floor to public comment at this time and open it up for commission discussion.
Um, we've, um, actually been at this for quite some time. Do you wanna take a five-minute break before your deliberations? Yes?
Okay, at this time, we're gonna take a, a five-minute recess. So we're looking at, uh, seven thirty, we should be, we, we're gonna recommence. Everybody can take their seats so we can, uh, continue, please. Everybody can take their seats so we can continue, please. City of Riverbanks Planning Commission Meeting, seven thirty-one, we'll recommence. Commissioners, we have, I guess at this time to discuss the, the item at hand, three point one.
So I apologize for being anxious earlier, but somebody who talked to us mentioned that something about approval of two warehouses for growing. And that's another thing we, I as a planning commissioner has heard about. And I don't, I'm not sure if anybody on the committee here has heard about it, so I'm just curious what the city has for that.
The city has no application so far. Um, we have only received applications for dispensaries. Our code does allow for commercial grows with the DA and the CUP. It does allow for testing facilities, it does deliver, it does allow for deliveries from outside the city, into the city, uh, with the business license and a quarterly fee. So we haven't, you know, had the applications, uh, to bring in front of you yet. But in our discussions with the dispensaries that have been coming forward, we have told them that if we do have an application and, and get a commercial grow, we would like you to, you know, purchase supplies from within the city. We would like to see you hire from within the city, and try to keep everything as local as possible. But when we do have an application, um, I will let you folks know.
Okay, and I, just a couple other clarifications. One, I think you had mentioned that I believe the number of locations is based on population in the city. Is that how the regulations go?
The original draft, um, proposed a one dispensary for every sixteen thousand population, but the actual adopted ordinance had that removed. Um, we found that in talking to people who are interested in having a dispensary, the makeup of our town actually prohibits a lot of locations from being able to, uh, support a dispensary. For example, you know, we have Patterson Road, uh, that, a commercial heart that cuts right through the city, and on either side, you have dotted, uh, schools. So many of those properties are within six hundred feet of a school, which is both the state law and the city ordinance, is you have to be more than six hundred feet, so that cuts out quite a few properties. Then again, you would look at commercial daycare facilities, and you would look at our community center to ensure that none of these places that move forward are within six hundred feet. Was there a second part?
Well, I was just wondering, is there a maximum that we can have in the city? You said there was a population, but that wasn't in the final.
Correct. So in addition to many of these properties being ruled out because of their distance to schools, you also have landlords who do not want to rent or lease to this type of use. So that cuts out even more vacant properties, uh, from the mix of, of supporting a, or, of having a dispensary at that location.
Just a, a housekeeping, on the, uh, on the information I was sent, the email, it had five percent as the amount that, uh, you know, five percent or more. And then on what you showed tonight, it had four percent, so is it four or five?
Right, although that is a typo on my, my part. Flavors, the one that came through before, uh, used, we used a template of that DA. And I had assumed, since this was medicinal and recreational, that they would have the same percentage. But because of the lengthy discussions we've had with our attorneys and with their city staff, we realized that these folks are more geared toward the medicinal end of it than the recreational end, and they intend to have, just by the nature of their business, they will have less people coming through than, say, the recreational one on the other side of town. So therefore, we felt that four, four percent was, um, more fair to, to get them off the ground, to see how that works. Um, and again, these, um, development agreements are three years. And so if we get to the end of that time period and we realize, well, they are doing quite a bit better, or maybe they're doing quite a bit worse, we can renegotiate with them at that time. And to kind of correct what another gentleman had said earlier about how he felt like this was just kind of a pittance, that the city could get more from them. Well, we're only talking about dispensaries here. And a disp, and the dispensary, the development agreement for this, we're talking about either a flat rate or a percentage of the gross receipts, whichever is higher. So if they do quite a bit of business, we'll reap the benefits more because of that, um, the way that that's worded. When it comes to a testing lab, or when it comes to a grow facility, those fees and development agreements will all be negotiated separately, differently, because each location is unique and each business is unique. And so the city wanted to, um, you know, be able to be flexible and talk to them and, you know, not just, uh, you know, try to be greedy about it and take all the money that, that you can, but try to do something that's fair for them, but also fair to put back into the community in our, uh, safety services.
Okay, and one, one last question at this time is, the building, facility that we're looking at, the building we're looking at used to be the hotel. And it's two-story. So this company is looking at the bottom floor.
Correct.
Nothing in, in all of this, nothing's been said about the top floor. Uh, is there, you know, what can be allowed there? What, what would be allowed there if we allowed this dispensary? What would be allowed to be upstairs?
Okay, well, for example, if they move in and say they're doing really well after a year, and they find they need more office space, they may have the option to lease the top floor as well. If both the bottom floor and the top floor are leased by the same, uh, business, then the property owner does not have to put in an elevator, because, uh, your public could be limited to the bottom floor. Now, if another business comes in, say, maybe a psychiatric office upstairs, since it's a different business, then there would have to be an elevator, which is a very large expense. So I think at this time, um, you know, the landlord purchased the building, he was going to build to suit, and, um, we'll see, you know, how it works out. If he gets enough of an income to be able to develop the second floor, um, I think he's ready and willing to do that.
And so would rooms for rent? If you, if somebody wanted to rent out the top floor and rent out those rooms, not the company that's applying, they would then have to put in a, an elevator?
Correct.
For that floor? Okay, okay, thank you.
Oh, um, oh, yeah, I think we had a mention of being a landmark structure. Does it fall in that category?
It does not have landmark status. Uh, we do consider it to have historical value to the city, and they are not, um, uh, demoing the outside, they're not changing the outside, except for some windows were closed on the lower level for security purposes. And they do intend to paint and spruce up the building, but there will be no structural changes to the building itself.
Okay. I think, uh, a citizen brought up, uh, wanted to know, um, they said the money's going to help the community, they wanted to exactly how is this going to funnel back into the community? And how will they see any benefit from it, other than the city seeing a benefit from a projected income?
The language of the development agreement provides the city sufficient flexibility to determine where those funds should go. And that was intentional. These, uh, development agreements are not drafted in a way to tie the city's hands to say they can only go into certain categories. And that's been the policy, uh, you know, from the top down, from the city council, and, and to give that type of flexibility. So the public benefit is really designed to help mitigate, first, existing cannabis uses, illegal cannabis uses, that the city now has to contend with, because in addition to illegal dispensaries that exist around the county and in, uh, neighboring cities, there is also the addition of the personal cultivation component, and individuals not realizing that Prop sixty-four allows up to six plants, and potentially there could be bad actors who go above and beyond that, and that will require additional public safety code enforcement, as staff mentioned, fire, all these different considerations. So the public benefit is really designed to give that city, the city, the determination to see where those funds really need to go.
Okay. Just, just, just my, the way, I guess as a citizen, I would look for some, you know, looking at, you know, what happens. That's good, it's like the money's going back into research for, you know, cannabis research, you know, monitoring it, see what its effects is, and how, uh, the services are rendered. But in the community, you know, the, I mean, is that gonna be useful, like kids gotta go to summer camp? Is now the city gonna have money so that, okay, they can sponsor certain community projects? Are they gonna have money so they can, you know, beautify the streets? Are they gonna have money so that they can create more parking spaces? You know, so when we say, you know, more money's coming in from this cannabis usage, is it, are we, as a citizens, going to see its monetary effects, or is it something we're gonna have to wait after three years to see? That it's actually benefiting the community, and not just, uh, building a, a safety net for the city, and this community is really not seeing a benefit from it? So what I, I think what, what I think that they're wanting to hear is exactly, you know, how does this? Because I can see that's going to the city's safety, making sure that we're doing it correctly, but how does that go into the community for, you know, for, for the skate parks, for the community centers, for the, you know, the activities, the Christmas parades, and things of that nature? Are we looking to, you know, increase our quality of life from this monetarily, or are we just making it available? Or are we just protecting ourselves because it's coming to? Regardless of how we look at it, it's already been approved, and are we just putting things in places so that it is approved, we can just go forward?
There's a lot of unknowns right now. Um, the state is rolling out the new regulations and issuing the permits, so from staff's perspective, those areas that need particular attention are, are not quite known right now, and so it's, it's hard to really gauge the, the proper way to say, well, we're not allocating a certain amount to go towards uh, community outreach or, um, sending kids to programs. I, I do believe the applicants, um, in, as part of their materials discussed, you know, being involved in the community separate and apart from the public benefit that they're gonna be paying to the city. So it's unfortunately a little hard to, to gauge where those funds are gonna go now, but the, the whole point of that is to let staff determine as time goes on, case by case, what needs the most attention, because in, in saving certain funds to go to certain projects, maybe for beautification or for street repair, but maybe what the, the city determines is maybe there's more police services that are needed, or fire, or vice versa. So it, it's, it's really one of those things that you have to gauge as it comes along, and we can't really tie, tie those funds to anything particularly right now.
I think that the, the, the money that would be generated from that will go to police enforcement, illegal grows, so on and so forth. We got enough stuff growing out here right now that, that's stock their thing for a year, that's illegal, growing out in the open. And, uh, I think that if we're gonna go after all that stuff, uh, you know, one cop in a car is a hundred grand. Look at this, and it's ten thousand dollars. So I don't think you're gonna, this isn't gonna be, if the city thinks they're gonna get a bunch of extra money to fix streets and this and that from this, they're, they're not gonna get it.
Why did they pick this particular location? Did we have other locations that were comparable, and why was this one like next door to City Hall? And then I guess we got the other place, which is over by, uh, the, the, right, right by, uh, right by cruisers, behind pit stop?
Well, as I'd mentioned, just even the way our city is laid out, keeps many of the vacant buildings from being used as a dispensary. But I think another intention too of being in the downtown is, you know, we do have a lot of seniors, we do have a lot of people who would like to walk places and not have to get in their car and go across town to get groceries. I mean, we'd like to bring high-quality services downtown, so that, um, the people who need them the most can get to them without using a vehicle.
And they are within the regulations of, as far as footage within schools and things of that nature, correct?
Correct.
There was a, a comment made by members of the public, um, about it being less than half, uh, I think a mile away from schools and youth centers. So state law requires, um, the city's ordinance also matches that prohibiting cannabis uses within six hundred feet of sensitive uses. And, and all the projects as presented to the city, and considered at the staff level, ensured that it meets those requirements. So anything coming before the planning commission, the city council, um, is insured to, to match those requirements.
And if I might add, um, uh, at the end of Santa Fe, the, the white building at the corner of, uh, Fourth, I believe, that has the mural on the side, it's vacant, it was a furniture place for a short time. Several people have looked at that site for dispensary, but it's five hundred and eighty feet away from the school, and so that was ruled out. So that kind of gives you an idea of the distance that, uh, the state and the city have looked at.
Now, the, the safety issue is, um, different too. The safety around that place, if they do what they're supposed to do according to the information we have, uh, would be very tight. If you look back a couple of years, we had a large number of, uh, sexual predators that were room there. Uh, we had a lot of homeless people over there, there was a lot of drug use over there. So it hasn't been a real cozy place for some years, so we need something, whether it's this or something else, but something that, uh, will, um, fix up the place, make it look good, and make it a lot safer than it has been in, say, the last four or five years.
Okay, so I think another thing that's kind of confusing amongst the audience also, and myself, is what is actually the difference between, it says adult use and non-adult use? What, what is actually that?
Adult use is somebody that's over twenty-one years of age, that does not have a doctor's, uh, letter or, uh, recommendation. When you say it's a medicinal dispensary, then they require that you have a doctor's note before you can, uh, purchase any of their product. I think where you're, some of the confusion is, is there, there seems to be some crossover where maybe people are using it recreationally or adult use, uh, because they feel like they need it for a medical reason, yet they don't want to travel to a doctor, they don't think that their concerns would be addressed appropriately. And, um, so I think there's some crossover between the two as well.
I wanna make a couple of things. I'm a finance person, so I just wanna deal in facts. I understood you, there is no limit
There currently is not.
And the money generated is not going into a restricted fund, it's going to go into the general fund to be distributed. Better? Okay? There's no limit to the number of dispensaries that are, that can go into the town. And the money from the use or whatever of the dispensary won't go into a restricted fund, it will go into the general fund just to be distributed in a regular budget.
Single delivery service currently serving the city of Riverbank. There is well over twenty different illegal dispensaries and delivery services currently serving the city of Riverbank. Meaning that they are dropping off next to schools at, at nighttime, delivering to households with no regulation, no taxes and no, uh, information being collected. They are in essence completely unregulated. Um, there is an opportunity with January, uh, first, two thousand eighteen with the new laws. In order to be able to create a regulated system in which the regulated industry can pay to eliminate the illegal. Well, you're never gonna completely eliminate the illegal, but can significantly decrease the illegal activities that are currently going on in a city such as, as Riverbank. If you, if you were to not allow these kinds of industries, you would be asking your current residents, your current general fund and the money that would otherwise be going to transportation projects or to public safety officers, uh, would have to be used to offset and pay for, um, these types of activities. The, the, the answer to the question of whether or not we want this has already been answered by the California voters. Um, Californian, as long as we're members of California, we are not allowed to prohibit people from consuming, um, marijuana for either as of January first.
But I, but I can, but the city, the people of this city have the right to say whether or not they want it in this city.
They do not. They do not. They have, the, the, the people of the city have the right to say whether or not they want to allow it to be dispersed within the city. You do not have the right to, uh, to decide whether or not you want to allow it to be consumed within the city. So. Then, it, you know, this is a very, very important distinction because it's, this is a significant one. So for instance.
Then why are we here?
One second, please. The floor is closed. It's just open to the, it's only open to staff right now. So please hold your comments.
The people that care for a conditional use permit and a development permit, that means that we have to give.
Could you move your?
Some, some sort of approval. And I, I personally feel that the citizens of a town have the right, they, they have the right to express their voice and their feelings. As to what goes on in their city, what they allow in their city. We've already, we've already established the fact that financially it's not gonna be a plus. I tee everything. I put the pluses on one side and the minuses on the other. And from what I've heard tonight, I gotta tell you, the minuses are way ahead of the game here.
So with all, with all due respect, Commissioner, um, I, I, I wanna make a very, very clear distinction. Whether or not you allow this conditional use permit, that's the prerogative of, of, of the planning commission. You have a staff recommendation to approve it. Whether or not you, you allow it or whether or not the, the city council, if you decide to, uh, not allow it, decides to allow it, that's a different issue. That's why you all are policymakers. We, we are not. We're staff. But I wanna make a very, very clear distinction. This city, this council and this commission does not have the right legally to prohibit the consumption of cannabis, marijuana within the city of Riverbank, period. We do not.
I didn't, I didn't say that, sir. I didn't say that. I'm talking about approving a dispensary here.
Correct. So you, so the issue is really whether or not, so we know that the county has said that they're going to allow, I think, I believe, eight, some of which are within, you know, blocks of the city of Riverbank. Uh, we know that, um, the city of Modesto has also said that they're going to allow them and the city of Oakdale's going through that process. And one has already been approved, uh, by the city of, of, of Riverbank. The question is whether or not you want to, uh, we as staff have been, have a strong, uh, recommendation that we do not want just one, uh, dispensary in the city. We think it creates a monopoly and we want people to be able to tell on the other person in the event that they're doing something unlawful or something that they shouldn't be doing. So in other words, we wanna have somebody who's incentivized to have things operate in a, in a positive and lawful way. So that's, that's staff's recommendation of why we want more than, more than one. Um, if the answer is that you want two, then I would, um, and you don't want any more, then I would certainly encourage you to make that recommendation to the city council. And it would be the Ca- city council who would have the authority and jurisdiction to decide whether or not they wanna, wanna do that. Um, my only point in, 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 in pointing this out is whether or not, given the fact that you can't eliminate the negative impacts, whether or not this is the type of user, uh, and the type of place that you would like to have it in order to generate the revenue, in order to not have it fall, uh, upon the residents and otherwise take away from transportation and public safety. That's, that's the, that's the only thing. I, I apologize. I would've been here earlier. I had to come from a meeting in Angel's Camp. But, um, that, that, that I think is really the question of what you're reviewing tonight is whether or not the location and the end user. The issue of whether or not, in all candor, the issue of whether or not to allow these has already been answered by the city council. The city council has said yes. So now it's a question of location. Um, and so within the context of the, of the city council's parameters and edict that they've given this planning commission, the question is, as somebody who, as, as, as a candidate who is, who meets the zoning uh, and who otherwise qualifies, is there anything in the conditional use permit that would, that would essentially, um, not or prohibit you or, or dissuade you from saying that that is a not an appropriate location? Um, I would, I would also say that what you have before you is only a, a small, uh, portion of the overall regulations that these entities will have to comply with. Our additional administrative guidelines, I think, are gonna estimate in the twenty to thirty page, um, um, things of additional conditions that they're going to be subject to in terms of operating. So with that, I'm happy to answer any more questions that you have. But I, again, I think a very clear distribution. The impacts of, of cannabis due to the passage of Prop sixty-four and the Compassionate Use Act are here and there's nothing that we can do. You have over twenty delivery services currently operating within the city of Riverbank that you see no tax revenue for, have no, have no way of regulating and no, and no money, uh, so to speak, in order to stop them. So, um, the id- the idea behind these is to give you a lawful way and it, to have a regulated system that could end that. But I have an answer in the additional questions that you have.
I'd like to make a statement or, or actually how I feel about this. Um, I've lived in Riverbank for fourteen years and I believe cannabis is something that's coming. A month ago, I approved the other location. My issue here is the location. The other location I liked because it's on the main street. People can drive in. They have their own parking lot. They can, uh, pick up what they want, get back in their car and leave. Here, they go down the main street in downtown. Since I've been here and with the improvements that we've done downtown, I really feel what we want is a place where we can have events, where we can have families come down, have, uh, there's the, uh, restaurant. I'm not sure how often it's open. Haven't seen it open yet, but, uh, there's that. There's the city offices and that. There's places to come down. There's grocery, grocery stores. Uh, so it's going to attract family eventually and people. We put in that, uh, nice park down there to put a dispensary between a restaurant and a city office. Uh, Evelyn, I know has been bef- uh, in front of us many times talking about parking. And we do, we continue to give parking to different uses that we approve, but we've never done a parking study. So we don't know if we are affecting people downtown, if the parking is adequate. If it isn't, there are seven spaces. It says they will have up to thirty employees. Now, they won't all be there at the same time because they're gonna be open seven days a week, twelve hours a day. So there'll be two or three of them. Um, so the people that come and go will have to park on the street or the other places. And we really don't know if there's adequate parking. So my concern is not about cannabis. Uh, my daughter, who was in a horrific accident, uses it and it really helps her. So I believe in it. I don't use it myself, but I believe in it. I just think the location is the wrong place. I think there's gotta be a better place. Let's keep the downtown for the wine and, and cheese festival, for the fun things, for the things we have at Christmas time. And it, it's not cannabis. I wouldn't vote for letting a liquor store go in there. It's not the right place for it. There are other better places, I'm sure. So I just wanted to give you where I'm coming from on this. Okay?
I wonder, has anyone, that thing goes off by itself. Has anyone spoken to the business owners down here and, and how they feel about having that type of business in this area? Like the new, the person that's doing the Del Rio and the Pizza Plus? And do they feel this is a good thing or a bad thing for them as business owners? Have they mentioned it to you?
No. Excuse me. We have not received any contact from them. No.
I, I, maybe I'll address this to the ladies. Um, do you have any, how much are you charging for this? To be able to pay that and? Can I ask them directly or no?
Yes. You can, you can have the applicant come back and answer questions from, directly from the commission.
That's okay. So it seems like the amount that the city is charging you to be in business is, to my thinking, kinda high. So if you have to compensate for that amount of money, then you must have to charge a lot for the product that you're selling and have a lot of people buying it. Can you give me any ideas as to how, how much traffic and how much it costs?
Um, so the current dispensary that we operate also pays four percent to the city of Sacramento. So, um, that is why we asked for that number. We feel comfortable with that number. We, um, have all of our bills paid every month with the four percent going to the city. And so, um, we are confident that we should be able to provide, um, that to the city without a problem. Every product is based individually on how much we purchase it from the wholesaler or distributor for. And then we mark it up, um, in order to cover the costs, uh, associated with running the business. Um, so each of these products, depending on, um, how much we get it for, could range anywhere from, you know, ten dollars to eighty dollars.
Okay, so that's gonna, that's gonna be a lot of people coming and going in a fairly small town. So would you say that there will be a lot of people coming from other towns to utilize this dispensary in order for you to make the amount of money you need to make?
So it's just like any other business in town. Um, when people are coming through, um, they may come from other towns, but typically we will be serving the residents of Riverbank and, um, the unincorporated surrounding area. And, um, we anticipate probably around fifty patients a day.
Okay, so I guess, thank you very much.
So, excuse me, how many people you say a day? Fifty?
Fifty throughout the day, so it's maybe about, um, three to five per hour, two to five per hour.
Your paperwork says a hundred, ten.
That's our goal. Yeah, yeah.
I don't really know if the, the prices you're charging here are competitive or not. I guess it's too soon to know whether it's a competitive price. But if the price, because of all the regulation, everyone keeps saying, well, we're gonna, we're gonna be able to regulate it. So we're gonna be able to control all the, you know, the black market, et cetera, et cetera. But there is so much regulation already, everybody wants to jump on this bandwagon and, and make some money from the people that are starting the dispensaries. I think you're gonna create a black market all by yourself. Because it's, whoever wants to smoke it recreationally is not gonna come and pay you fifty bucks for a bag and go down to the corner and get it for ten bucks or whatever they sell it for. I don't know. But I don't think that's a reasonable argument. I am personally kind of surprised that, that this has come to Riverbank. You guys gave a great presentation. That's nothing to do with you. But not very long ago, just a few years ago, the city council that was there then, which is not the same city council, was trying to run the local smoke shop out of town because they sold baggies that paraphernalia. They didn't even sell the product, but yet they were tortured. Even less time ago, there was a huge thing over tattoo parlors. We don't want Riverbank to be the tattoo king of the county, so we've gotta stick them out in the boonies. And all they do is, is draw on your skin. So the bad element that hangs out at the tattoo parlor, well, we have to do away with that. And now we're selling the item downtown, next to the police department. So I don't know how we got here. It's kinda, kinda crazy. That's my personal take. Thank you.
So clarification for the commission and the public that following the close of public comment, uh, the commission can ask questions of the applicant and of staff. And as the commission is aware, the deputy city attorney has been present for, um, cannabis-related meetings. And, and so it's appropriate, um, to have that discussion in case there was any question about that.
So, um, I think I can answer your question, Commissioner King, because I actually worked on almost all those issues. Um, the thing that has changed is you have a statewide initiative that, that, um, recognized something that was previously illegal. I think that the, the, um, support for Prop sixty-four, um, if you told me even two years ago that Stanislaus County was gonna have a single dispensary, um, much less that almost every city within Stanislaus County, including the incorporated area, unincorporated area, was going to allow it, that you would have, um, something like sixty things, sixty different permits that would be allowed in the unincorporated area, that a city as conservative as Modesto or Oakdale was going to be allowing it. I would've said that, um, that you probably had something too much. Um, but I think that we have to, there has to be a, a recognition of a change of law uh, and the impact of that change of law, uh, and how to deal with the ramifications of, of that change of law. And so I think that what you've seen is largely a response. I'd also like to remind you, what's before the commission tonight is not whether or not y'all wanna allow it. That decision has been made by, by the city council. What is, before the planning commission tonight is the question of whether or not this is an appropriate location for it. Um, so I, I, I wanna be very clear in terms of the question that's before, before the planning commission.
I think we understand that. It's been said enough.
Yep.
Uh, to answer, uh, Evelyn's question, you raised whether the, I think, four point two, uh, was the money or did we tax them? No. The, the way this is set up is that, that, uh, four point seven, which talks about taxes, that they won't tax them, uh, is because of four point two, which requires them to put up so much money. So they're getting the money. It's just not a tax. It's a.
Okay, anything else?
Yeah, I've struggled with this a long time and, uh, it came up at the last meeting where we approved the one location. Uh, the folks that presented seemed very professional and, uh, I liked their presentation. The thing that I would really like to see is for the city to go with the one and see what surfaces, what kinda problems we have, uh, what kind, what happened with the security, uh, all these other things. Uh, in, in our packet, it talks about a review once a year. I think that the first year we ought to review in a half a year, see what's going on. Cause none of us know what the deal's gonna be. We don't know if they're gonna make money as, as, uh, Mr. King was talking about. Uh, or if they're gonna, if their security systems are really good or not, or who it draws in and, uh, a little idea of, of what the, uh, uh, number of cars and all the rest are gonna be at that location. Then if it, uh, appears that after six months that, uh, we have our fingers on all the buttons, then we take another look at it.
Okay. Right now, what is the building, the, is, is it, um, zoned R? Is it, is it, cause we got, we got commercial here.
It's zoned, uh, downtown core in the downtown specific plan, which allows retail uses. And then as far as parking goes, uh, the downtown, uh, specific plan especially, uh, discusses, uh, shared parking and lowering parking standards, uh, for businesses to create a vibrant downtown where parking change is over, uh, where you have the short-term uses like this type of retail, where, uh, there is a constant changeover of parking.
Okay. Uh, I hear a lot of comments saying, you know, Riverbank's a small city. It will be small for a s- short period of time. By two thousand twenty-five, it's projected, we're gonna be fifty-two thousand. So regardless of how we try to condense and wanna remain a small knit community, society and evolution is not gonna allow it. We're expanding and whether we keep up or don't, we're gonna feel the effects of it. Right now, what's happening is our, our emergency services right now are at a strain. They will be even more strained without no extra dollars to cover the influx of things that are going on around our city. And things we cannot control that are going to cause us to be in more of a deficit than what we are in. So what I want the community to think of is that, yeah, it, there is a lot of negative uses or a lot of negative effects. But what do we? But what do we do to combat ourselves and protect ourselves and place ourselves in a position to offset it without putting a more strain? Because right now, we already know we have a strain on our services. We have a strain on just about everything we do here. Right now, we're going to have a more strain because after January first, as the attorney just said, there's already, you can phone up and have them come in here. Doesn't make a difference. You're going to have the same thing, unregulated. You don't even have to do that. You can have people go into Modesto, buy it, bring it over here. Not a problem. So now, we have all that influx of problem from those other people because we're saying, we're not going to do it. So now, we don't have anything to pay for that. So we turn around and say, okay, well, we're going to have, the state has already approved. Nothing we can do about it. So how do we do to protect ourselves? We saw in some kind of way that we can enforce ourselves and increase our protective services and make our city as safe as possible. My question is that if we do do these kind of things, we have to be as inconspicuous as possible, just like Commissioner was saying. This is the main hub for our cheese and wine, for all our community activities. You know, it's kind of sad to see you walk down there and all of a sudden, somebody say, hey, well, let's drop over here, whether medicinal or not, because after January first, it's okay, and get something. But if we pick a selective, a nice selective place, something that's inconspicuous, we do not discriminate businesses from operating within our city according to the state, and we protect our community by hopefully, we could continue to meet not just today, but other days to make sure that the, that the city allocate those funds properly. Because just as a meeting, every now and then, like we're doing now, it's not going to get what we want done. The money's going to come in, just like the question I raised, where is it going to be? That's a question you guys should be raising later on. It's going to come in here, we want it to go here, 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 but collectively, you're going to have to come and talk about it. Right now, we're just going to talk about whether or not we're going to make it, we're going to change whatever regulations are over there for them to do it. Yeah, there's still a lot of, there's still a lot of groundwork has to be chiseled through before they actually open up. But right now, we're just laying the foundation of where you can go. Now, what you're going to look like after that, we haven't seen that yet. So are we ready to make a motion on this?
Here.
Your mic.
I move approval of the project.
For the commission's ease of reference, there's two resolutions before the commission tonight. So I'd recommend going through the first one first, and then we'll take it one by one. So the first one is for a resolution recommending approval of the development agreement. So that's resolution number two, twenty seventeen dash zero two seven. We need a, is that amended as the first?
Item three point one, we're moving on to make a motion on resolution number twenty seventeen dash zero twenty-seven and conditional use permit for zero five twenty seventeen. Resolution number two zero seventeen, right, just that one?
So there is a motion and a second on the floor for the commission's consideration of item number one. And that's just the resolution for the development agreement.
Okay, so I second. You said it's on the floor, right?
There was a, there was a first and a second. It was already seconded, so it's ready for a roll call vote.
Okay.
Sheriff McKenney?
Yes.
Vice Chair King?
No.
Commissioner Stewart?
No.
Commissioner Tobacco?
No.
And Commissioner McRitchie?
No.
So that's four one, no?
And number two?
It's up to the commission's consideration if you want, but without a movement to move the first item forward, it's really the commission's prerogative.
No, no, we have to vote on it. Because if they vote no, then the applicant can appeal it to the city council.
So for the second item, the resolution before the commission is twenty seventeen dash zero two eight for the conditional use permit.
I'd like to make a resolution, or make a motion that we not accept resolution number two zero one seven dash zero two eight, which is the...
Conditional use permit.
Conditional use permit.
Second.
Okay, Sheriff McKenney?
No.
Vice Chair King?
So just to clarify, that was that we not accept, so yes, I agree with you, don't accept.
Commissioner Stewart?
Yes.
Commissioner Tobacco?
Yes.
And Commissioner McRitchie?
Yes.
So that's five oh, not approved.
Four one.
I'm sorry, four one. Who was the one? Oh.
McKenney.
So now, the next step is that the applicant does have the right to appeal within the next ten days to the city council, and the DEA item will go to the city council showing a recommendation of no from the planning commission. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, alrighty, moving forward. We have item four, planning commission comments. Any comments? Okay, community referrals?
Yeah.
There we go, Mr. McRitchie.
As you well know, there are a couple terms up, and we have a couple new commissioners coming aboard. And they, one will replace me. Because of my health issues and the fact that we had ten people apply that were very qualified, that I asked to be deleted from the group. The original reason I decided to run is that there weren't candidates. And I'd had many years of experience, five different planning directors, and I felt that I could help out in that interim time, which I did, because there were some vacancies. And had I not been here, there wouldn't have been votes. However, if you have someone that's a lot younger and eager and qualified, it's time to get rid of one of the old folks. So anyhow, I just wanted to let you know that. I appreciate working with you. We've done it before on different committees, and I enjoy this. I enjoyed all the information you put out, which is a lot, but I do read it all, so thank you.
Okay.
There have been two people, excuse me. We had Mr. John Dynan as our alternate, and he will be joining the planning commission. And another person has been selected to join because we have Mr. McRitchie and Mr. McKenney both leaving. So we have Mr. Dynan, and we have a second person, and then a third person will be an alternate. So they have been selected, and as was said, we were very fortunate to get ten applications. And I believe eight of the people had at least master's degrees.
Very good. Okay.
You never get anybody, you know.
Alrighty, okay, we move, staff comment. Huh, what, you got something?
I do have just a comment.
Alrighty. He can't hear you, your mic.
We'll get something in our packet on, usually Thursday. And on Tuesday, we have to read maybe a hundred pages, if we read it all. And some people are working, so it's very difficult. I'm retired. I can take, usually take the weekend off and read it and that. But what I'm hoping for, what I would like to see, is there a way that we can share information prior to that? Or if it's something that is really difficult, that it be brought up at one meeting. In other words, we get it, we have the four days to go through it, we meet, we have questions, we do all that. And then we hold it over if we feel we need to, to get more information before, say, the next meeting. Like we did on that special, special, the proposal to change the general plan into the special, or whatever that was, I forget what it was now. But I'd like to have that as a consideration. That would help us know better and make it easier for us to make decisions, rather than just sort of guessing.
Okay, we tried to, we tried to get them, the packets out as quickly as we can, but it's amazing how quickly the month goes by. In fact, this week, we have to do the public notice for next meeting, and I've already started on those staff reports. So it's kind of a paper mill.
Right, right. Nothing about what you do, because we get a lot of stuff in it. Just a thought.
And just the only limitation, Commissioner, is the fact that when we give it to you, at the same time, we have to make it readily available to the public. So it's not one of those things where we could, that's why we kind of do it all at once so it doesn't become confusing to the public. So whenever we make it available to you as a commission, is the time in which it has to otherwise be made available to the public, at least for whatever we've given you.
So then, the best answer to that would be is if any of us feel like we really haven't had time or it's a lot to read, we could ask it be held over for another meeting. Because then, it's gone out to everybody, and you're just holding it off for a month.
Correct, or if it was only like, if there was one of you that knew it was going to be otherwise occupied over the weekend and not be able to get to the packet, that'd probably be an appropriate time to meet with the director and maybe go over that item ahead of time. Because if it's only to one of you or less than a majority of you, we won't, it won't trigger the requirement for the public distribution. So we can kind of do it on a limited basis if you know that you're going to be, so that's one, two different potential solutions for you.
Thank you.
Any other comments? Okay, moving over to, on to staff comments, six point one.
Okay, just wanted to share with you that Flavors did get an approval at the last city council meeting. It was the first reading of their ordinance to adopt the development agreement, and it will be coming back to them in January for a second reading. And then, item six point two, the residential skate ramps ordinance. That, the language that we had about regulating skate ramps in private backyards was pulled from an ordinance that we were bringing forward concerning the R one district. And I'm planning on bringing that back to you next time as a discussion item so we can more fully discuss this and see what your views are as to prohibiting it, regulating it. Are there other activities that you want to add in there? Maybe you don't want to touch it at all. So before I go through the mechanics of putting together an ordinance to address this, I want to, you know, make sure of what your feelings are on this topic. So we'll be bringing that as a discussion item.
Outstanding.
And then, oh, I'm sorry. Oh, no, one final comment once you're done.
Okay, I was just going to say, our next meeting is January sixteenth, and we'll be seating the new planning commissioners and saying goodbye to our existing that are leaving. And just so you know the process in our code, that the person who has like the most seniority, that has not been the chair, moves into that position, and that will be Mr. King. And following him would be Mr. Tobacco for the vice chair. So just so I'd share that with you for our next meeting.
Alrighty, there we go. Great. Item seven is adjournment. Thanks a bunch. It's now eight twenty, is there any other comments?
No, it was more to wish everyone a happy holidays and merry Christmas.
I missed that, wish everyone a happy holidays and merry Christmas.
So hungry.
I know, did you miss your dinner?
I thought about stealing your little snack suit.